Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Flanagan.
Here.
Yalderslos.
Here.
Maryhoof.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Here.
And Merrimas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Angie Walker from Zion Reform Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance. Pastor, welcome.
Thanks. Dear God, thank you for today. Thank you for the city of Granville. It's great to see people in our community enjoying the outdoors and the indoors, whether it's Christmas in the Commons or a Granville Community Choir donating toys for Helen de Vos, opportunities to shop with a hero walking around our city, enjoying the many holiday lights in the parks. I pray for us to continue to be a city that cares for our residents, for those who work inside our city and for those who visit our city. Help us to be a community that's full of peace, justice, service, and kindness and hospitality to others. I pray for those in our community who might be struggling over the holiday season. Maybe they feel cared and loved by their neighbors in this city. May tonight's meeting be one in which discussions and decisions are guided by peace with a view of bettering our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you so much for being here. Thank you. What we have before us, the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone would support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Great. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, November 24th. You had a chance to take a look at those minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Support.
Motion, support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody would like to point out on those minutes? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. And presentation of the bills, a little less than we're used to lately, so we've got a construction season that's winding down. So Griffin, anything you'd like to point out on the bills before we open about the questions?
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, the total amount for this meeting is a little bit less than normal. Do you need to point out, first off, a vendor by the name of Adams Associates Appraisal Company in the amount of $7,000. This was an appraisal of the property at 3675 Platonik. That's one of the hotels that we've had some discussion about. High Warren Bolt Inc. in the amount of $15,786. This was some of the renovation construction services associated with some of the city hall improvements, the mayor's office, the wall in between the city manager and the assistant city manager office, as well as some drywall repair that was, that took place at the DPW following the water damage caused by the drinking fountain leaking that was found a handful of months ago. Johnson Commercial Interiors in the amount of $13,044.06. This is the invoice for the carpet replacement that took place miscellaneous parts in city hall that was approved back on August 11th. Lighthouse, the Alara Group, in the amount of $19,000. These are the invoices of August through December associated with the fee agreement for insurance brokerage services that was approved back on October 13th. As a friendly reminder, those should be the last of those invoices where, starting in 2026, they will be paid on a commission base through the health insurance provider and not through a fee contract with the city. And lastly, Cumation LLC in the amount of $15,953. This is the annual software license for the SCADA system at the Clean Water Plant. This is probably the last time you'll see this invoice. You all will remember a few months ago, the city council approved the purchase of a new SCADA system. So we are going to be overlapping systems for one year as we wind one down and one back up. So we don't anticipate this will be an invoice you see again next year. That is all I have to highlight this evening, but it's normal. I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any questions, and I've got all the invoices with me if there's any you all would like to look at in more detail.
Great. Questions for Griffin on any of the bills tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $346,299.07?
Support.
Motion, and support. Final questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Yalderslos.
Yes.
Maryhoof.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Flanagan.
Yes.
And Merrimas.
Yes.
Well, tonight we have a presentation from our friends at Granville Senior Neighbors. Welcome. So how are things at Senior Neighbors?
Busy, busy.
All right.
Indeed. All right, well, thank you. I am glad that I get to be here this evening. My name's Suzanne Callahan. I am the president of Senior Neighbors. I'd like to say I'm the new president, but I guess I can't say that anymore. I'm coming up on my second year. I have a few slides that I put in the packet for you, but I also want to let you know that more importantly, I have with me Christina Moberly and Aruna Kamara. Christina Moberly oversees all of our centers throughout Kent County, so she is in Granville one-fifth of the time, or sometimes three or four times a day. It depends. So she oversees all of our centers, and then Aruna Kamara provides oversight to all of our programs, that we have a lot of programs outside of just what happens in our centers. So they are familiar faces, hopefully, that you would see around the community. So, all right. So wanted to give you a real quick overview of Senior Neighbors. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the depth and breadth of things that Senior Neighbors provides. We love being here in Granville, so we'll focus in on some of the things we're doing here, but I want to make sure you know some of the things that we do outside of that. We do have one central office. We are located very close to the Sixth Street Bridge downtown. We have five centers that you can see, the one here in Granville, but we also have a location in Sparta, one up in Walker, not too far from Three Mile and Alpine, Lowell, and then we have one down in downtown Grand Rapids. So there are five locations. We offer wellness classes at the Granville Center and at 16 other sites throughout town, the library here in Granville, and then at other churches and locations throughout the community where the rent is low. So we're always looking to offer wellness classes there. Transportation services, we'll talk a little bit more about. And then we are the home for the AmeriCorps Senior Program in Kent County. And when it says sites up here, these are adults over the age of 55 that are placed in volunteer opportunities throughout the community, at schools or at other nonprofit organizations. So we like to keep our older adults busy and involved. So that's kind of the big picture of where we are in Kent County. So when I mentioned Aruna is here, we, there are really three buckets. If you want to think about Senior Neighbors, you think about the center, but one big bucket is personalized support and solutions. So think of us as 2-1-1 for older adults. We get the phone call that says, "My mom needs help with..." dot, dot, dot. "I have my neighbor needs help with a..." dot, dot, dot. It could be transportation, a leaky faucet, some financial concerns, any number of things. Think of us as we help people figure things out. We have case managers that are located downtown at our main office, but they also do come and spend time at our centers. So folks that come regularly to the centers would see them, but other people might pop in and be able to work with a case manager there. So that's the one aspect. A whole bunch of services we provide in that area that you're, I'm welcome, you know, happy to tell you about Aruna. We'll take you out for coffee and tell you all about those, but that's the one bucket. And then I think we can flip ahead here to, this would be an example really in action. We have some funding through the Home Depot Foundation. We do a lot of work to support veterans and spouses of veterans. We have some minor home repair things, a home chore where we would do a simple faucet, leaky faucet, put in an air conditioner, think Honeydew List that our staff does. But through that grant and some other funding from Veteran Services, we're able to do bigger projects like bath modifications, ramps, things like that. And so this is an example of a project that we've done for a client that is able to now live safely, get in and out of his home thanks to that extended service. Okay. And then what you might be most familiar with is senior centers and community life. So we think of our centers as the front door to a lot of the programming that you're probably picturing if you've had a chance to visit the center, also to a front door to those personalized services. We have, you name it, there are activities. There's the garden here that is going full force in the summer. We have wellness classes. We have cardio drumming. There's a lot of noise, and sometimes it's really quiet because they might be playing cards or bingo or going on field trips. So really think of all of the things that we're doing at our center in Granville. We're doing that there. Sometimes it's in the four walls there. We've got five centers where we're doing that and out and about. So I think I've got a couple images here that are Granville-specific after this slide. Oh, well, here, this is specific to Granville. So this is, thank you Christina for this. So you understand the scope of what's happening today in your center. On an average basis, we probably about 50 people that come through just for center-specific activities. Our friends with Meals on Wheels, we're like this, we're peanut butter and jelly with Meals on Wheels, if, keep us together, peas and carrots. So we are five of their 14 congregate meal sites in their service area. So Granville served just under 5,000 meals, very affordable meals, healthy nutritious meals, sometimes the only great meal that you're getting over the course of the day, and you don't have to do the dishes. So that's, that is nice. So folks are doing that at the center. We have about 160 registered individuals. So on a daily basis, 50 people are typically coming through, but there's about 160 people that we would say they're part of the club, that they're officially registered. So plenty of capacity for more to come, but those are dedicated folks. Six, six highly attended wellness classes each week, a variety. We've got some pictures coming up. And then in November, 295 participants were in the fitness classes. So it is hopping. They're zipping in, they're zipping out, they're hopping while they're there. So lots going on. And then I think we've got a little line dancing that's happening. There's Tai Chi, there's yoga, a lot of different classes. Really, the thing that I love about what Julie Lake, who's been with Senior Neighbors between forever and about 18 years, oversees our wellness program, and she brings an enthusiasm to that program, complemented by Christina as rec therapist, that they're not saying everybody has to be living, lifting heavy weights and doing this class. It's about wellness. They're infusing vitality and wellness into everything at the centers. So, or outside of the centers. There are lots of field trips. So these are our friends from Granville that took a field trip. They do have an advisory council where they have input into the activities that they're doing. So Christina comes up with great ideas, but the seniors do as well. And picnics and fun, so it's really nice to be next to Wedgewood Park, so the fun can continue outside. I'll leave you with two really quick stories. Every year we have a gala to showcase the impact of our work, and Sue asked me to make sure I'm telling everyone this, so I have to tell this story. She attended one of our wellness classes, which is about the camaraderie and participation in those activities and everything, and she suffered a heart attack. And then during her recovery, the doctors were talking about how vibrant she was and how quickly she was recovering, and she attributed it to Senior Neighbors Wellness Classes that helped speed along the recovery. You can't always control everything, but you can do your part. And she said, she looked at me and she said, "You need to tell everyone that they need to go to the fitness classes at Senior Neighbors," because it saved my life. So if you see Sue, I've now told you. Okay. So that is a great story that you can take with you. And then Bob is someone that you might have a Bob in your life, where he was married to his wife for 64 years, and she passed away. He also, his vision was failing, and he was a pretty vibrant, active guy, doing lots of things out in the community. And his world was getting smaller, and he was getting a little bit depressed in his home. And his daughters encouraged him to look into our transportation program to get places and attend the center. So he did, and it's much better when Shelley Irwin, and he tells the story. But the, cut to the chase, he started attending our center, made friends there, and then one day Addie came in, and there was some snowball fight at the center, and he asked her out to dinner, and the rest is history. So he, he definitely, and I actually, this is very Grand Rapids, I know his granddaughter, and we were catching up after this story, and she said, "I've never seen him like this. He's just a whole new person." And this is, I, it's my short tenure at Senior Neighbors, but spending time with Bob, my predecessor, he's had the joy of sharing stories like that for over 30 years of people that have found that connection with a friend to play cards with, or maybe something like Bob and Addie, so you never know. So we're happy to share those stories with you. I know you have a tight agenda, but I hope, I know it's always good. I've sat in your position, it's always good to get a feel-good story, so those are your feel-good stories. And then to wrap it up, if you haven't seen our buses or our vans, you will tomorrow because they're out and about in the community, every corner of Kent County, over 51,000 rides, making sure that folks can get to the doctor's office, volunteer appointments, field trips, whatever it is, we're here to help. So that is Senior Neighbors, if you have any questions, but that's the story.
I've just got one comment, Suzanne, and one question.
Sure.
So thanks for what you do at Senior Neighbors, and I know between you and Meals on Wheels, you are really helping people maintain their independence, which is so important.
Absolutely.
I mean, financially, it makes sense, and just emotionally, it makes all the sense in the world, so thank you. One thing, I did have a question about, you had, one of the slides said refugee assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that's very common? And I didn't know.
I should actually have Aruna talk a little bit more about that. We actually have several case managers that focus specifically with that program. We work with other partners in the community where a family may relocate to the Grand Rapids community, and they may work with Bethany or one of the, or Samaritas or one of the other organizations. And a lot of times you'll find people come here with multiple generations that come through. Pardon me. A lot of those services are designed to get you situated really quickly, and then you're sort of on your own to figure things out. And older adults sometimes need a little bit more hand-holding to get through some of the paperwork. We stay alongside refugees that are six-year-over. We serve people that are six-year-over in the community, and we stand alongside them a lot longer to help navigate some of the things like transportation, things like that. Their language barriers might be a little bit greater, helping them get situated all the way through citizenship and things that are down the road. So it's not a six-month. We have some that are year-long engagements where our case managers are there. They get very connected with them, for sure. Yes.
Other questions for Suzanne? Yeah, I missed it. Are you in charge of the Granville Center?
Um, I'm not in charge of anything, no. So I'm the president, I'm downtown. Christina oversees all five of our centers, and Amanda is the, she's one of our new center coordinators. So we have a center coordinator that is employed there full-time, five days.
Okay.
Yeah. So she's, she's there, and is really, wants to be the most closely embedded. So if you pop in, 100% of the time, you'd see her. Once in a while, you would see Christina as she's in and out.
Is Rin still with your organization?
Amanda is the new Rin. Yes, Rin, yes, Rin is no longer there, but Amanda is, that's the role. Yes, that's the role. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And then the, one other thing, then if there's any other questions, just to let you know, more field trips, cardio drumming, so open your windows, close your windows. I don't know how you want to think about that, but there'll be cardio drumming, things like that coming. We have engaged with United Way, Brenda Bream at United Way has helped with one of our other colleagues. We will be a VITA tax preparation site at a couple of our centers when we get into the tax prep season. And the thing that is unique about this is a lot of times folks that are over 60 that need some help with this may not want to go and sit someplace where there's a bunch of kids running around and all the hoo-ha of all that, that they have an opportunity to come to Senior Neighbors. So we think that's going to be a really cool opportunity coming in the springtime. And then more on this, but we received a very significant grant from the Michigan Health Endowment Fund, if you heard us doing cartwheels not too long ago, and it is for a companion care respite pilot program. The work I mentioned about AmeriCorps, the person who oversees that program is fantastic. She's an expert in matching up senior companions. Christina is an expert in running centers, and we know that there is a need to avoid social isolation and folks that maybe need a buddy. We've got a really cool program that's going to be kicking off, and the Granville Center will be one of the places that I know is going to be part of that. So more to come on that, but we know that reducing social isolation is our job. So that's what we do.
That's good.
Great. All right. You know where to find us.
Thank you.
Literally.
Thank you for participating. Very interesting.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, if I can just share, I also just wanted you to know that, you know, Charlie and I have been out at the Granville location, and one of the things we were talking with them about is starting to think about what opportunities are available to do some refreshes to that space. So we included $5,000 in this budget year, and what we have found is that's not going to go particularly far. We obtained a quote to either, well, to re-floor the facility there. You saw through some of the pictures, half of the building is really old carpet, and the other half of the building is old, like linoleum, almost like gym floor-looking material. And some feedback we've gotten, both having coffee with some of the participants there, as well as some of the staff, is that they're just, they're really interested in exploring, doing a new, more of like a composite kind of hybrid-type flooring there. So we got a quote from Johnson's, who just did the carpet here at city hall, and that's looking to be a little bit closer to $13,000 or $14,000. So what our plan is, is to try to roll the $5,000 in from this budget year into next year's budget, and then see if we can budget the rest of that next year and hopefully be able to do some flooring. But in the meantime, we're trying to work with their team to see what other minor options exist in terms of, very similar to what we're thinking about in city hall, carpet, paint, that kind of stuff, just to spruce the place up a little bit. So hopefully, we'll be able to make some of that happen in the next year or so, but just want you to know those are some conversations we have ongoing with Senior Neighbor staff.
Excellent. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's time for public comment. Anybody here tonight would like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about. Mike, welcome.
How you doing? I'm doing well. Mike Cobb, 336240th. First, thanks for everybody for serving. I appreciate it. Steve, I'm glad you're feeling well, and ran into our former clerk, Mary Minnis, and she said to say hi to everybody, asked about her protege, and I said she was doing a knockout job, just like she did. I would also like to thank the Snowplowers and everybody for helping keep the roads good. The Senior Neighbors, we get to, we rent the hall for Christmas, Thanksgiving, and Easter, and it's such a blessing, but I love picking up their pamphlets, their booklets, and we take, me and my wife take care of quite a few elderly people, and I love giving those pamphlets out because it's got activities, meals, transportation. Yeah, they do a knockout job. Last but not least, I heard about, my heart is saddened about Teresa. Just heard about that. I don't know the details. That's for the people that are involved in it, but I just want to thank her for all the joy that she's brought to this community over the last 11 years. I mean, and the added income for the businesses and just, yeah, kind of putting us on the map. So I wish her the best, but like I say, my heart's just heavy with it. So thanks again.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Lots called for comments? All right. Next item on the agenda under the consent agenda, we have some reports and minutes. The November treasure is some police report, and also the minutes from the Park and Recreation Board of October, and the November meeting minutes for the Library Board and the Historical Commission. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
You think anybody wants to talk about in particular those items? If not, is there, we've got a motion for, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. City managers report. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few items on here for all of your consideration this evening. The first one is our property liability insurance renewal for 2026. Marcy prepared a memo that's included in the packet summarizing the renewal proposal from the MML Liability and Property Pool. This is who the city has been getting insurance through since, I believe, 2022. As part of this annual renewal process, the clerk's office, the clerk's office did facilitate a proposal and a quote from MMRA, and ultimately, we are recommending that the council renew with the MML Liability and Property Pool for 2026. With that being said, I do want to note that we are seeing a significant increase in the amount of about 16% this year. That is higher than normal and higher than a market increase, and that's primarily related to our organization's poor loss ratio, which is largely impacted by two large flames over the last couple of years, notably the lightning strike at the Clean Water Plant and the accident that the fire engine was in last year. But with that being said, we're still recommending that council stick with the MML Liability and Property Pool for 2026, but we will, of course, continue to look for other options that give us the best value for the community moving forward. But with that being said, I know Marcy was majorly involved in this process. I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add, otherwise we're happy to do the best we can to answer any questions.
Yeah, just want to especially thanks, Marcy, because I know it's involved a lot of work for you with insurance in general, in particular, the renewals and just all the details, and thanks for all your time with that. So, do you have any questions for Griffin? So two quotes, one about $214,100, about $320,000, so thanks to be here. Jason.
You know, it all makes sense, and the recommendation's great. The only thing that stood out to me was the increase in payroll, being north of 18% year-over-year.
Yeah, so over the last year, the organization conducted a classification and compensation study. So in addition to some contract increases for some of our union groups, our non-union groups, depending on the specific position, saw varying increases that were larger than a traditional cost of living increase.
Were there any positions added as well year-over-year?
Uh, there were no positions added in this most recent budget year. We have, we have added some positions over the last few years, but since I've been here, I don't think you've added any new positions.
Good question. Any other questions? Not. Is there a motion to award the liability insurance renewal to the Michigan Municipal League in the amount of $216,635 in the best interest of the city?
I'd move to award it to MML.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? Josh?
Just to comment, I was re-elected to serve as member of board directors for the Liability and Property Pool, so since I'm serving in that capacity, I should recuse myself for building on this.
Suzanne, do we need to do a motion and?
I think it's fine. Just stay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
Right. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryhoof. Steenstra.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Yalderslos.
Yes.
And Merrimas.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item we have is kind of a continuation from the last meeting. So as you all likely remember, we had some discussion regarding communications proposal from Sago PR. We discussed that they were proposing some ways to help us enhance our engagement with residents about... about some upcoming bond-funded projects, notably the water meter replacement that's planned community-wide in the spring of 2026. At that time, no action was requested and was really just looking for some input or for some feedback from the city council regarding whether or not this was something we wanted to try for these upcoming large projects. The feedback received at that time has led to bringing that for you all to consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Sago PR in an amount not to exceed 18,000. And then I would just note that this effort would be paid for out of the water fund, not the general fund. But with that, happy to discuss it more if we want to revisit any items that were discussed at the last meeting, but otherwise the proposals should look the same.
One thing that really struck, a couple of things really struck me. And that is with our other construction projects, there seemed to be a little lack of communication sometimes between residents and the contractors when the contractors were responsible. So what I liked in this proposal says, we encourage the city of Granville to take ownership of this issue and serve as a source of truth on the project, giving residents and businesses confidence in the information they receive. I like that. It's our responsibility. And then if anybody has an issue, they can come to council and we can say exactly what we did. Whatever that, well, we're not really sure the contractor was supposed to have. They didn't get ahold of you or whatever. So makes some sense. And you know, this is, I think, the first time we've done this kind of thing. So we'll try it. Let's see how it goes.
My understanding is, as part of the, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, as part of the DDA street skate project, there was some professional communications assistance that was involved with that, to my knowledge. Other than that, this hasn't, something like this hasn't been done since then.
That's great.
I think this is great. I go back to the cable stuff that was repping up our town and nobody knew what was happening. And then we heard from a number of residents with that Wallace Street project. And so I think if the city comes out with a good communication plan, it's going to be a great thing. So I'm 100% buying this.
Mayor, may I comment? We're working through city manager, and I'm working through the contract with Aetna for the approved water main replacements. And the, one of the things that's in the contract is that contractor provide both a information update weekly for the city website to show where we are in the project, as well as coordinate with this consultant, assuming the council approves this consultant to work on the project, to make sure that all the messaging is approved and consistent. And then also maintain a communications center, that is a call center, that folks can call in to schedule work on their home and have a point of contact if they have questions. So we're really trying to do a good job and make sure the communications are clear and that everyone's up to speed on what's happening with this project. Good. Town script? Thank you. Thanks for your effort with that. Mike?
I was just going to mention, I appreciate you mentioning that. I support moving forward with this, and I would just encourage the manager, as if this is adopted, to still stay in communication with the vendor doing the water main replacement. I also heard a lot of complaints from individuals on the MetroNet fiber over the summer. And I think this is even more of an intrusive, because we're actually wanting to come into their home. So like you said, Mayor, I think that's really important that the city take ownership of that and put out that message while also partnering with our vendor that's actually doing the work so that there's overlap there and people are getting the right answers. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Jason.
Yeah, just to add, I think it's, this is what also gets carried, one, we need to go on their homes. But two, I mentioned last time, a lot of these end-of-life meters will start underreporting so people's bills are likely to go up. They'll be more accurate. But it's a whole other layer of complexity.
Yeah, it's a good point. I mean, it will be helpful if people understand, okay, the bills are going to go up, but the rest of us are kind of subsidized.
Right now, right? And then everything will balance out and people will be paying their fair share if things are productive.
Josh?
Yeah, no, I'm in favor of this too. I mentioned this last time when we talked about it. I think it's a good plan. I think that, you know, Dave, what you were talking about with contracting should really be part of our standard contracting going forward for some of these big projects, that that's a requirement of some of the vendors that we work with, especially projects that are, you know, disruptive to neighborhoods and homeowners and things like that. So I'm glad that we're doing that with this. I did have a question. I know I've seen something similar to this previously as they were kind of giving us their, you know, kind of overview of what they thought would be. I guess I'm not sure, are they recommending that we do all of these tactics that are listed in here? Or is this a list from which certain things would be selected?
Yeah, not necessarily. It's not necessarily all of them for every project. And my understanding is it's ultimately going to be billed at their hourly rate, which is why we're looking for a not-to-exceed amount. But I think we talked a little bit at the last meeting, like, you know, when we have a water main project, that tends to, yes, have impacts on the whole community when it comes to traffic flow and traffic disruptions, but it's much more impactful for specific neighborhoods. There are certain communication tools that will be more effective for that as opposed to like the water meter project is not so different than the MetroNet one that was mentioned as truly a community-wide project. So, no, I don't anticipate all of those will be done for every project. But I think it was more meant to put kind of the menu of options that they are recommending we consider using when communicating about these projects.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all in favor of the communication. I just feel like we should, it sounds like that's what they're planning on doing, is kind of targeting the tactic based on, you know, the scope and the inclusion factor and that sort of thing. So I'm pleased with that. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to enter into an agreement with Sago PR in an amount not to exceed 18,000 dollars regarding what we just talked about to do with the water projects in Granville?
Good one.
Smaller? Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steve Struck.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maringa.
Yes.
And Merrimack.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item I have for you this evening is due to the Christmas and New Year's Day holidays falling on Thursdays in 2025, not 2026. In 2025, several city hall staff have asked if I would consider closing City Hall to the public on those days. These are traditionally low-traffic days in the office. And currently, our Friday schedule is to be open from 8:00 a.m. till noon. So closing those days would allow staff to use vacation time and benefit from the extended holiday weekend. Nevertheless, because this would be one last day, we would be open to the public. It wasn't something that I wanted to make a decision on in a vacuum. And also, it's not something that we deal with every year when you think about the fact that I think holidays are only going to fall on Thursdays every six years or something like that with leap year. But I just, I wanted to bring it all to you to get your input or your feedback, to see if you had any strong feelings one way or the other. Obviously, we want to be available to the public and make sure that they have, they have, we are available to them should they need services. I have confirmed there are going to be no utility bills or tax bills due on those days. If people are still looking to make payments, we always have the opportunity for the drop box in the front. But otherwise, just looking to see how you all feel. If, you know, this is something we don't want to do, we'll make sure we have staff in the office. But otherwise, I did tell them that I would bring it to you all to get some input on. So happy to answer any questions, but otherwise just looking for your feedback regarding the request from city staff.
I've just got one concern. Well, first of all, I'm in favor of the days off. And they're going to use their own vacation.
They would use their own vacation.
Plus, I mean, it makes sense to have four days. The only thing that I have a little bit of concern about, and maybe Marcy can help me understand a little bit, is if somebody wants to come in and do a passport, do they, they book ahead of time anyway?
They can book ahead of time.
They can.
And we can cross that day off, but so far, nobody has booked anything.
So let me just do a scenario. Christmas morning, family is gifted a trip. Now we got to go get a passport. They can't come in for a couple of days, which doesn't seem that bad. But are there other places in the area that they could go on that Friday if they really have to?
There are. I think the closest would be City of Walker. I know City of Kentwood does that one, so.
Okay. Does the post office still do those or not?
By appointment only.
Okay.
Yeah, and not ours at Granville. It's only the one in Jensen.
Okay.
And I do know we're not the only municipality considering this. I don't know off the top of my head who else is getting those days off, but this is kind of something we're hearing from some others. So just something that I don't think there's a right or a wrong answer to. Just want to see how we feel about it. I think the other thing that is probably important to share is, you know, if we were to have staff that didn't want to use their vacation time for whatever reason, we would theoretically be closed to the public, but we could have people work. And we have plenty of stuff that always needs to get done. But I don't know if that necessarily will be an issue either.
Thoughts, council?
I'd say it makes sense to me to close. What I would say to the manager is just to be able to communicate that to the public. I know a lot of people have times off around the holidays, so maybe they're thinking, well, I'll come into the city on Friday during my day off to do some business. I think if we communicate that well ahead of time, folks can take that into consideration and make changes with their schedule as needed.
Thank you.
No thoughts? Do you want kind of like a head nod or you want a formal motion?
I don't need a formal motion. I just more wanted to bring it and just make sure no one had any major concerns. Again, obviously, it's one of those that, again, I just didn't feel comfortable making that in a vacuum. It's a decision that, you know, theoretically could impact people. I just want to make sure we were thinking it through.
Okay. Any others?
The next item on the city manager's report is the annual consideration of board and commission vacancies. So the packet includes the updated summary sheet that Marcy so kindly prepares for you all. It's been revised since our last discussion on October 27th. You'll note that there have been a few committees that have made some recommendations. I think there are a couple of others that are still planning to make some recommendations. The Planning Commission, for instance, I believe, identified a couple of candidates at their last meeting that they'd like to interview in January. So again, with that being said, what we would look for at this point in the year is just for the council to go through the various boarding commissions and consider making appointments. I know at this point last year, because of some of that, there was some interest in delaying it a meeting or so. That's a possibility as well. It's just, it's one of those items we kind of have standing on our first December meeting is to bring this list to you all. So I'll leave it up to you on where you all would like to go with it from here. The only other comment I wanted to make was at the last meeting, I was, it was also asked if I would bring the information compiled on the various committee structures, roles, and responsibilities back as well. So that is also included in the back.
So council, I mean, it's up to you how you want to proceed. I'm suggesting, although it's a little tedious, maybe we go board by board. Some are going to be very simple and some, in my opinion, we really need to wait for, like Planning Commission, City Chair and JR are there. Really like to hear, you're going to do some interviews, and I don't think we really can make a decision until we get that from you. So unless I hear big objections, should we start going through them? And we'll kind of knock down the easy ones first and then. So let's go to board review. And the method of appointment is we get a recommendation from the city of Sussar, and then the city council appoints. There's one regular term expiring at the end of the year. That's Dave Haltzma. And he'd like to be reconsidered for reappointment. That would be a three-year term expiring 12/31/28. Any thoughts on that or any motion to do so?
Can I do a motion per board?
Please.
Sure. Motion move, David, for support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Second one, Board of Zoning Appeals. So we have two city council members, current city council members who are on there. And David has done it all, like Planning Commission, also we can only really have one. So let's see, I think that council member Gelderlos will not be on the zoning board of appeals. But let's see, Mike, you are on that already.
Currently, yes.
So the method of appointment there is the recommendation from the staff or from the zoning board of appeals, and then we appoint. Doug Timmer, he's on there already. He would like to be reappointed. The two alternate people, Aaron Offergut and Stan Constein, would both also like to be reappointed. But there will be one vacancy. I guess I would, either we review the applications or we go to the zoning board of appeals.
The other thing you all could consider is if you have two alternates expiring at the end of the year is considering one, appointing one of the alternates to the board, and then that would just maintain one alternate. But again, ultimately, that's up to you all. But at least putting someone on the board who has some experience as an alternate, we could then theoretically try to find someone as a replacement alternate to.
Yeah. Seems to make some sense to me. I know that like Stan has been an alternate for a long time. I'm not sure about Aaron. How long Aaron's been?
He's been for a while, too.
While.
But Stan wanted to be an alternate, didn't he?
Yeah, and so does Aaron, I believe.
Well, there you go. Ignore what I said.
Okay.
I guess I would put it back on the board, that board, to interview the rest of the applicants and give us their recommendation. A lot of those names appear on a lot of other boards. And so I guess I'd just be cautious that they would interview them and say who's best fit for them and give us their recommendations, especially if those two alternates want to stay as alternates.
I agree. I'd like to hear, I know they don't meet a lot, but this will give them a reason to meet. And they can go through the applicants. Any suggestions?
That's my motion, I guess.
Okay. Motion to?
Do that.
Wait. DDA to do a recommendation. Got a motion support. He gets support on that?
Support, for sure.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. Next item is the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, which they're actually going to be doing some, hopefully they're going to be busy next year or so. So city manager serves there as well as Brett Gruendike, and Brett would like to be reappointed. So the recommendation is city manager gets reappointed for a three-year term, as does Brett Gruendike. Any thoughts? So are our motions on that?
We'll shoot.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments? All those in favor of reappointing city manager and Brett Gruendike for a three-year term, they say yes?
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Next, Business Relations Committee. Scott Passmore is very involved in the community, one, and his term is expiring, and he would like to be reappointed. That's for a two-year term expiring at the end of 2027. Is there a motion?
To.
Support.
Motion, support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Next one is, in my opinion, a little bit more difficult, is Construction Board of Appeals. Maybe not super active, but there's one person, Ken Haveman. His term is expiring. He'd like to be reappointed. Mr. Din Harkoc, I believe, does not want to, or has left, or he's not on the board, or he doesn't want to. I felt like I needed to review the applications a little bit more to see if there was somebody who was particularly skilled in construction, that kind of thing. One of them has had a lot of experience with home repairs and so on. So I'm not sure if you're ready to make a motion on that, or you want to review it a little bit more, or your thoughts on that.
I would just point out, if it's okay with the city council, the Construction Board of Appeals is actually a
I would just point out, if it's okay with the city council, the Construction Board of Appeals is actually a pretty unique board. So I believe it's the only one on here that doesn't have a residency requirement. But with that, by state law, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are certain requirements of experience or trade experience. Again, you have to be a surveyor, a contractor, an engineer. This is one of those boards that I don't think we can just appoint anybody to. So if it's something we're not ready, staff can go back and take a look at the applicants and we see if we have anyone who meets the qualifications outlined in statute. If not, we can reach out and see if we can find some other options as well.
Thoughts? Sounds good to me, although we do have one who's currently on, Ken Haveman.
Absolutely.
Maybe we could reappoint him at this.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll take a motion on this.
Well, I was supporting your motion.
Okay. I think there's a motion and support.
That's good.
All those in favor of, at this time, reappointing Ken Haveman to the Construction Board of Appeals, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Next one, Downtown Development Authority. Well-funded board. A lot of work. Board recommendation there is to reappoint Amy Gaddis and Heron and Heath Jurgens, both have been on there quite a while, both are very involved in the downtown area. Is there a motion to follow the recommendation of Ida DDA? It also says appointed by mayor, of course, I'm in favor of that as well. Amy Gaddis and Heron and Heath Jurgens, to a four-year term, expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-nine.
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Any opposition, please say no. The Elections Commission is the next one. They're not real busy very often, but it's an important thing. Marcy, really, what do they do? They test the equipment and run the?
They approve the.
I'm sure it does.
They approve the ballot, the ballot style, the workers, the testing of the equipment, so. Any precinct changes, they would approve those. We meet every elec- before every election, so.
Okay. So the city clerk recommendation is that Ann Finski, who's one of my neighbors and has been on for quite a while, get reappointed as well as Ken Haveman to take the place of Christine Easton. And you know Ken, you're?
I spoke to Ken.
This is your recommendation? Sir, motion to follow the city clerk's recommendations and reappoint Ann Finski and Ken Haveman?
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
The next one is the Environmental Sustainability Committee. That was another one where there were a couple of people on there from here, so the method of appointment is recommendation from the board, which we still are waiting on a couple, it looks like the board has recommended Mitch, a reappointment of Mitch Leachman for a three-year term. And we already confirmed that partial term.
At the last meeting.
At the last meeting. So there still is a vacancy.
There's two.
There's two.
One.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, one for Seth and Boy and Jason.
We met, we met last week and minutes didn't make it in time for this, but the board did make a recommendation for one of the seats and they wanna interview for the other one.
Okay, and?
So we can make sure that's in for next meeting.
Okay. Wanna just hold off on that, on both of those then?
Unless you just wanna hear it from me.
Well, I'm kinda curious, so.
Ooh, on the spot.
Yeah.
Libby is her name, but that's not her legal name.
Okay.
Elizabeth, must be Elizabeth.
Andre, yeah.
Do you have, Marcy, are you gonna be fine yet?
No, it's Elizabeth.
Yeah, okay. So that was the Seth, the full term, the Seth term, and we're gonna go out to interview for my partial term.
Okay.
But Jason is going to be the delegate from the council. Not me any longer. Is that correct? Oh, so who's? But it would still be my citizen term, that's a bit partial.
Correct, so your citizen term, but not the council appointment.
Right. So is there a motion to, right now, reappoint Mitch to a three-year term and also Elizabeth Andre for a three-year term to the Environmental Sustainability Committee?
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Okay, the next one, Historical Commission. It's a recommendation from the board and the council appoints, and I think they've referred to the minutes from their last meeting, which were in our packet tonight. Griffin, Marcy, help me out with this one. I think they maybe recommended one person. Oh yeah, they picked, yeah. They've recommended the people listed right there, Linda Rosell is president, Joy Skol is AP, and Anna Ley is secretary, Rhonda Penobrolik, Treasure, Andrew Will and Bonnie Priestly, like, is members at large. Is that correct? Okay. Cause I'm looking at the minutes from the November seventeen meeting and I'm like.
It's notes vote for positions, member at large, Bonnie.
Okay.
All approved, present positions. So I believe Bonnie may be the new one.
The new person.
And the rest of them are just confirming.
Right, so is there a motion to approve that list of one to three? People that are just.
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Next is the Library Advisory Board, four-year term. The board has recommended reappointment of Jay Elder and Carol Weidman for Mary Denover's term, and that will be a four-year term. And then also Nicolette Dreves is to fill a partial term that expires twelve thirty-one twenty-eight. And that was previously held by Millie O'Neil. Is there a motion to follow that board recommendation?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Next one, Local Officers Compensation Commission, it's for a five-year term and I think they meet every other year. Barb Skolfer is willing to be reappointed and that's the recommendation from that board. So is there a motion to reappoint Barb Skolfer?
Yes.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great, next item is the Park and Recreation Board. And I see there've been a couple resignations, but some of them are appointed by the school, some are appointed by the city. So it looks to me, Griffin, that really the only one that's appointed by the city
Be Kerry Reese.
Would be Kerry Reese to take Anthony Iraqi's term.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Kerry Reese to that position on the Park and Recreation Board?
Support.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Next thing is Planning Commission, we talked about that a little bit. They're gonna be doing some interviewing in January, so we'll just hold off on that for a while. Wait to hear back from them, your meeting's early in the month.
January seven, yeah, we're two interviews set.
And then last is the Tree Board, that's a three-year term. And let's see, on this one, Mike is on there already, so he will be, he would be our city council representative. And Randy would be coming off the Tree Board, I think we talked about.
Justin's, Marco's, his work.
And then take Justin's spot on the historical.
Which will allow the Tree Board to get another public member, which fits well with their resident-driven influence.
Right.
So I think the recommendation was to reappoint Dave Hart, but it still would leave one vacancy.
Right, okay, and Mike's?
Term, so Mike would theoretically be taking Randy's council seat on there.
Okay.
So Mike's resident.
So there still would be a vacancy. So I guess it'd be nice to wait for a recommendation on that one? But in the meantime, we can, is there a motion to reappoint David Hart?
Support.
Support. Motion support. Discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Council, for your patience. Thank you, guys, for your patience with that.
Appreciate you all doing that. The only other item I have for this evening was we are going to make a request to adjourn into closed session. Prior to that, I did want to make one note that following the Christmas at the Commons event, where I wanna thank the many of you who were able to attend for being there, it was brought up to me that it would be nice if city council members had name tags that they could wear at events like those to just signify you're not someone asking for money, you're running for election. Sounds like many of you have them. For those of you who don't and are interested or need a new one, if you don't mind, reach it out to me by the end of the week, we'll make sure we get them ordered, so you'll have them for the next time.
Do they, do they have pins on them?
Magnets.
Magnets, they're a little hard to wear on a winter coat, aren't they?
Okay, well, we can maybe look and see if there's any other options as well, but we'll, we'll work on getting the new council members, ones consistent with what everyone else has, and we'll look and see if we can find some other options. Maybe even in the future, it's just we've got some lanyards or something that we can put on, but there's a great piece of feedback, I just wanted to see if anyone else needed a new tag, so.
I had a couple of people that were leery to like accept the candy cane from me. Didn't wanna ask what I was raising money for and.
I get a leery of you too.
They were smart.
Jason and Mike, for sure, does everyone else have one as far as they know?
I do.
Okay, okay, we'll get the two new council members, those ordered and we'll get those in. I believe though, that is all I have for this evening, but like normal, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Griffin? If not, before we adjourn into closed session or make the motion for that, let's start with Councilmember comments.
I don't have much, I had a great time at the Christmas at the Commons, I appreciate all the hard work that went into that. I don't know anything else, see you again next week.
Yeah.
As the new city council member on the Historical Committee, I'm going to thank Josh right now for what he's gonna say on behalf of the City of Granville's history. Take it away.
Okay, so you're gonna have to indulge me for a few minutes here, I've got a little story to share with you. And so I did have a little help from ChatGPT, but I have a little story to share with you here and I think you might find this interesting, a little local history. So a guy named Henry Clay Preston was born in New York in eighteen forty-six. He enlisted in Company F of the New York, one hundred twentieth New York Infantry at the age of eighteen in eighteen sixty-four. Was part of the Civil War. His regiment was attached to the Army of the Potomac. He joined during the eighteen sixty-four, sixty-five campaign, serving through the bitter fighting in Virginia that culminated in the Appomattox Campaign. And he was present in April of eighteen sixty-five with his regiment at the time that Lee surrendered to Grant and Appomattox. And so like thousands of young soldiers at that time, he carried the weight of those experiences into civilian life. He rose from the rank of private to sergeant, I believe. And he ended up marrying a girl named Abby, or Abigail Goodale, who was also from New York. And in the late eighteen eighties, they moved from New York to Granville, Michigan, where he would live for more than forty-four years. He worked for eighteen years with the Sly Furniture Company in Grand Rapids, which was a well-known furniture company at that time. I don't know exactly what he did there, but he worked there for a long time and he contributed to the region's renowned furniture industry and quickly became a cornerstone of community life. He was affectionately known in the community as Cap or Captain, although I'm not sure that he actually achieved the rank of captain, that may have been more of an honorific or a nickname that he went by. But he got involved in City of Granville and in eighteen ninety-seven, he served as the second or third fire chief for the village of Granville. And eventually he ended up becoming the village president of Granville. He was elected four times in eighteen nineteen nineteen, nineteen twenty, decided he wouldn't serve for a third term. And then he served again in nineteen twenty-two and nineteen twenty-three, before retiring from the village council. I asked Marcy if we could find any record of anything important that happened during that time, of course, it was the nineteen twenties, the end of World War One. You know, Granville's still a village yet for about ten years, cause we didn't become a city until eighteen thirty-three, but we'll see if we can find something, she's been looking in the archives to see if we can find, but we'll see. And so he was kind of a local character who was kind of beloved by the community. There's pictures over there on the wall with the other Civil War veterans at the, I believe that that was a gathering or a reunion of the members of the Grand Army of the Republic, which was kind of a precursor to the American Legion, like a veterans association that was very well-known at that time. And I believe that that picture, Linda or Joyce could probably correct me, those from the early nineteen hundreds as well. That would've been a gathering of those veterans. He also was featured in The Bend in the River, which somebody has seen this, if you haven't gotten a copy of this, you wanna get a copy of this. He was one of the five living Civil War veterans whose picture was taken at the dedication in nineteen sixteen of our Civil War memorial that's at the cemetery right now, that statue that's there, that soldier was from nineteen sixteen, he was in that picture. And so he kinda retired as the village president or as a local leader in nineteen twenty-four. And September, September twenty-five nineteen twenty-four, he was in attendance at the Granville High School Homecoming Ceremony. And that was documented in the Grand Rapids Press, September twenty-six nineteen twenty-four. It says, "Homecoming feat at Granville is a happy occasion. Residents and jubilees celebrating reopening of State Street pavement. Five thousand persons attended Granville's homecoming Thursday in celebration of the reopening of State Street, which has been closed to traffic this summer for replacement of the interurban tracks and completion of the pavement." So a hundred years later, some things never change. And I can't remember which one, State Street, you probably know.
Isn't that Village Chicago?
That's where the interurban ran. Where the interurban used to be. So that was the lead in there. And it says, "Captain Henry Preston, former president of the village, was presented with a gold-headed cane in honor of his birthday anniversary, which culminated with the celebration." So his birthday must've been, I don't have the exact date, but right around that time. And it also coincided in nineteen twenty-four with his completion of his service as the village president. So this was documented in the Grand Rapids Press. So, and he was kind of a, it's interesting, cause I looked at The Bend in the River immediately to find out a little bit more about him. And there's a chapter here, chapter four, that's called "The End of the Century and Beyond", and it says, "In this age, you would see Harry Phillips going down one dusty street after another, lighting lamps at eventide. In his first years, young Harry had to stand in the stirrups to reach the lamps. He used old-fashioned flint matches and was paid fifty cents a night. Over along the river, opposite the present Johnson Park, one caught sight of Hyron Balma in his sulky and around him was the racing enthusiast of the village. And there strutting down State Street, he presided at every village fire, directing the volunteer firefighters, was proudly sporting his gold-headed cane, was Captain Henry Clay Preston." And so to kinda end the story here, so a few weeks ago, so I run the city's Facebook page, which many of you know, a few weeks ago I was contacted by a woman in Riley, Kansas, who had said, "I found this item at a local Goodwill store, my son found it, he's eight years old, he found this at Goodwill, and it has an inscription on it." And it says, so it's actually a cane, the cane that was presented
Oh, my God.
at the Granville Homecoming. At the Granville Homecoming that year, okay? So she found it, and it is inscribed to Captain Henry Preston, "Honor gift, former president, village president of the city of Granville, Michigan, from the citizens of Granville, September twenty-five nineteen twenty-four." It's inscribed on there. So she reached out by, on Facebook and said, "We found this at Goodwill. Does this have any historical significance? Is this anything that would be important to the city of Granville or your state?" And I didn't recognize the name at first, but of course I went to The Bend in the River and looked, and he's mentioned several times in the index. So I found the story and we communicated a little bit. I sent her a couple of pictures that I had found. And she says, "Well, we're going to send this to you, I'd like to send this to you as a gift." It's two ninety-nine at Goodwill. It cost her thirty-six dollars to mail it to you. But, but here it is, and so I'm going to be presenting this to the Historical Commission. Linda Rossell, who's the president, gave me, is aware of this as well. He saw it in the minutes perhaps of the Historical Commission that was in our packet. And I told her, we, we connected the last couple of weeks, and I asked if I could bring it here and kind of share the story with you, because I think it's kind of a good story. We're going to write up something about it in the newsletter, and then they would also like to display this somewhere here, either at City Hall or in a museum or whatever. But anyway, I thought I would come and share it with you, I thought it was a good story. The mystery is how a hundred years later did it end up in Riley, Kansas?
Exactly.
Which actually, there's a military base there. And so this woman who reached out to me, I think is actually enlisted, and her lives on the base or something like that, I think she's enlisted, because she said she, after I told her that this was a Civil War veterans cane, she was quite excited and brought it, you know, brought it to the people that she worked with on the base and the soldiers. And so they were quite thrilled to hear about this story and to learn about this and, you know, wanted to make sure that they were honoring the memory of Captain Henry Preston. So here it is.
It's an amazing story.
Yeah.
That is very cool.
Kudos Randy, but this is your first act of this.
Our expectations have been raised.
I don't know if it's real or not, but it's kind of cool. So apparently he was kind of a local.
There's no notches on it.
There's no notches on it, it's in very good condition for being a hundred years old. I mean, who knows where this thing has been since it left Granville? Who knows when? Mr. Preston passed away in nineteen thirty, and his daughter actually married Dr. Wedgewood, who some of you know Dr. Wedgewood's name, Wedgewood Park is named after him. He was a notable physician in the area. He was widow, and Mr. Preston's daughter married him after his widow passed away, or after his wife passed away. And they lived in a house that was right across the street from where Randy's house is right now in the corner, over here where the court building is.
Yeah.
Which was sold and torn down to make a, a fire department back in the nineteen sixties and then now, of course, is our, our court building. But, yeah, lots of good stuff in The Bend in the River, that's where I got a lot of this from, I found some stuff online. But I enjoy this kind of local history and even for some of the stuff.
Yes, yeah.
But anyway, I wanted to share it with you.
Good luck putting that in the minutes.
And maybe I did a great job of telling the story, but anyway, so here it is, if anybody wants to go and take a look at it, we'll keep it. And thank you to the woman who reached out and.
Sure.
Decided to ask questions, and she was going to let her kid play with it. So she says, "Before I let him play with it, you know, just wanted to reach out and see if this was anything significant." So I said, "Sure." It's amazing, here's the story. Anyway, finishing.
That's awesome, that's an amazing story.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nobody is very excited, none of the Thorpe Commission is very excited to have this too, because they said, "Well, we know of him, he's in the picture there, he's in the pictures in here. He's a known, you know, village president from our history." But they didn't, they said they don't have anything that belonged to him that they knew of in museums. So here it is.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, hey, thanks Angie for the invitation tonight and for hanging out an hour and fifteen minutes during the meeting. Appreciated the senior neighbors' presentation, they didn't hang out as long as you did. But I really am thrilled for what they offer our community and the services that our people can, can get there. And Mike, thanks for your tribute to Teresa. We will miss her, she's done some great things, planning a lot of community activities. And it was seen again Friday night with a heated crowd here, so. Yeah, we appreciate her. That's it.
Just want to say thank you to Teresa for her years of service to the city and also organizing Christmas at the Commons. And I'm sorry, council members, I couldn't stay for the tree lighting. My eighteen-month-old had a complete meltdown about ten minutes before the tree lighting, so I couldn't stay as long as I'd hoped, but we had a, we had a great time. And then I also wanted to give kudos on the railroad crossing project. They did a phenomenal job on that, I just wanted to pass that along to you, Griffin, if you can pass it along. I think that was a partnership with Enda and the Railroad?
It was, and I actually, I'm going to use this as the opportunity to spoil it. I also have some other good news about the railroad.
Okay.
So what was just done was actually just some repairs that we finally got CSX to do. So they pulled out the old wood, I forget, the, the old wood timbers and filled it in with asphalt. That's not going to hold up for a long time, but it's better than it was. When we met with CSX and Enda earlier in the fall or late summer, we learned about the local something crossings program, which is a, a grant program that the state offers, where the state and the railroad company split the costs of upgrading a railroad crossing, particularly when you see traffic numbers increase significantly. So we learned about it like less than a month before the grant was due. With the help of Charlie and the DPW team, we kind of scrambled together to put a grant application in, really with the hope of trying to get our name out there, probably not get selected this year, get some feedback, and then make a, a better attempt next year. Well, Charlie forwarded me an email from this morning that our project was selected. So there is a really good chance there will be even more upgrades to come at that crossing. So stay tuned, but I, I know that and a couple other things is one of the things I get more complaints about than almost anything else in time. So I'll use that as a little bit of a highlight that. I very much appreciate it, and we also hope we have more good to come at that crossing. Yeah, that's, that's the next step we're hoping to, is with the rubber base. So, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to mention, last week I was here with the, I guess, the intermediate students at Grand Republic Schools for the Amazing Shake. And one of their final stops was here at City Hall. I know myself was there, Mayor was here, Chief Wild was here. And it was so cool to see our youths, probably what, ten, eleven, twelve-year-old kids, engage with adults as a stop on their final, we had the final ten of eight hundred and forty-three that were selected to this, and then the top five went out of Tippy Cow, and they selected a winner. It was great, one of the students, and this is where, this is where I thought my Fridays were going to be off around the holidays, is because one student said, "If you were elect, or if you were mayor for a day, what would you do?" He said, "I'd give everybody the day off." This is where, as Fridays came.
I've been taking notes.
From one of these sixth graders. But no, but in all honesty, these, we have an awesome future in our, in our, our schools, public and private. And it was really neat to see these kids here and conduct themselves with pretty high intensity of Admiral, whatever, you know, fill them like, it was, it was pretty neat. So I'm grateful to be part of that, and I'm sure whoever else is here would agree with that, so that's all I have.
Yeah, like JR said, it was a lot of fun. I mean, the students come in, they shake your hand. The, the emcee, the person who answers the questions, was Blake.
Arms, the storm predictor.
The storm predictor, who calls school days. Kids all know, I mean, it's like the celebrities. Yeah, Christmas at the Commons was awesome this year. Kyle had some things, I don't know if you, do you have some stuff outside yet?
They had to pick it up, because I didn't have time to meet them somewhere.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't know whether you were going to.
And so Griffin let me sit there so they could pick it up.
Yeah, that was just a great event, reminds me like a Hallmark movie or something like that, I just love it. And also yesterday, I just got to enjoy a concert by the Granville Community Choir. They're still going after eleven years, and doing well. And, yeah, I, I know longer and they're accompanists, but I did play a little before and after the program, so that was a lot of fun. So with that, there's been a request for us to adjourn into closed session for the purpose of discussing commercial tax appeals, particularly human development LLC, C T L, Taco One LLC, and Mini Storage Depot LLC. So is there a motion to adjourn into closed session?
Support.
Motion, support. Discussion. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
O'Nell.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Yonkelus.
Yes.
Marya.
Yes.
Dean Struck.
Yes.
And Bear M.
Yes. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.